We'll take whatever time we need, either today or I can call Keith afterwards to bring him up to speed. So, good morning, everybody. Thanks for coming together for this special board meeting. And again, for those of you who were on this earlier, I think we're all feeling really good about the day and the transition that going on in Washington DC. And what we saw there, it was a pretty moving and special event today. I called this meeting because shortly before the holidays, as we all know, general manager Doug Kelsey announced that he would be retiring at the end of his contract in early March. So first off Doug, on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for your extremely hard work. Not only for your ability to be flexible and innovative and adapting to the COVID-19 pandemic, but also for all of the efforts you've undertaken in the past five years. It's really appreciated. TriMet is in a better place because of you Doug, and you're going to leave behind big shoes to fill. And leading the region's largest transit provider is a monumental task. And selecting TriMet's general manager is the board of directors' most important duty. And I'm going to underscore again, it's our most important duty. And please be assured, anybody listening here, that the board intends to implement an open, transparent, and thoughtful search process. It's going to be informed by feedback and interaction with the community and our stakeholders. And TriMet, I think, has demonstrated a strong history of community engagement and recently elevated its efforts during the engagement process when we did reimagining public safety on transit in the latter half of 2020. And I suspect we'll be seeing something very similar to that as we move forward in this process to hire a new general manager. That effort really did increase inclusion and participation from diverse communities in the tri-county area, even with all the challenges posed by a pandemic and social distancing. And with the board's guidance, TriMet staff will develop a public engagement process and opportunities in the weeks to come. And we will make those opportunities widely known once they become available. So today, however, I've called a special meeting of the TriMet Board of Directors as it's really important that we begin the process that will eventually lead to the selection of the agency's next general manager. We have some procedural steps to take care of to get the ball rolling. And the first of those procedural steps we must take is approving a draft version of the general manager's job description. And for those of you who weren't on the board when we hired Doug before, the board during that process approved the position description. And I'd like to accomplish that again at our regular January 27, 2021 board meeting, where we'd actually approve what I would call the initial version of the general manager job description, which will then go out to the community for input. So today, as we talked about, is a board working session to discuss what we, as board members, think are the knowledge, skills, and abilities necessary for TriMet's next leader. And I want to stress to anybody listening that no decisions or votes are going to be made today. This is a working session with the goal of hearing from each of the board members and having an open, transparent, and candid discussion about the challenges facing our agency and what will be the key focuses for us when we look to select the TriMet's next leader. And obviously, again, a lot of input from the community on this. In addition, under the authority granted to me as president by the TriMet Code, Section 2.35, I've appointed a TriMet search committee to assist the board in the logistics and the public in the logistics of the GM recruitment process. And that search committee is comprised of Director Lori Irish-Bowman, who's the chair, Director Ozzy Gonzalez, and Director Linda Simmons. And of course, all of the board's going to be involved all the way through this process. And we will have a chance today to discuss the roles and responsibilities of the search committee and the roles and responsibilities of the board. And for anybody who may be linked in today, I believe that Lori asked that the roles and responsibilities and the current TriMet position description be posted. So you should be able to get to that if you want to see what we're talking about and dialoguing about here this morning. So as we go on, staff, including TriMet's Executive Director of Human Resources, Kim Sewell, will be listening to our comments. She'll be working directly with the search committee Chair Bowman to make sure that the key qualities and characteristics, the board values in a general manager are reflected in an updated initial general manager job description that we will then bring, as I said, to the full board next week. This morning, to help us get focused and again, get this going, I've asked Director Gonzalez to lead the discussion around what qualities and characteristics we would like to see in our next general manager. And unless there's questions of me, I'd like to turn it right over to Director Gonzalez. So I'll stop for a moment and see if there's any questions or comments you have to leave. Otherwise, I'm just going to turn it right over to Ozzy.
No questions, Bruce. I just apologize for being late.
Not a problem. Hopefully, you heard some of what we're doing today. Did it make sense?
Yes, it did make sense. Thank you very much.
Okay, then I'm going to turn right over to you, Director Gonzalez.
There we go. I unmuted. Quick sound check here. Okay. I see a nodding head. Okay. Thank you very much. President Warner, it's wonderful to be with us all here today. Thank you, Director Edwards, for joining us. I didn't get to say hello to you earlier. As President Warner has mentioned, there are some materials that have been distributed to the board in advance. They have been posted, available for the public for reference as well. These are all draft documents and they are the place from which we're departing today. So with that, we're going to go right ahead into a work session where we're going to be discussing the roles and responsibilities, the job description itself. And we're going to initiate the process and officiate the process of making the search actual, an actual thing that we're going to begin doing. So thank you once again, President Warner. I want to recognize that we have already heard a lot of interest and some initial concerns from the public that we would not be involving public or other views as we hire for the general manager. And while I completely understand why this would be of such great interest and why there would be such concerns, we, as members of the board, as members of the community, and as public servants, take this role very seriously and intend to, in fact, bring the voices of diverse groups from throughout the TriMet region into informing this hiring decision that we're about to make. But it is a critical first step that we, as the board, open this important discussion in this public forum as we are here today. So pursuant to the Oregon law, it's set out in O R S 267.135 to appoint the next general manager. And as President Warner noted, it is our most important duty. And as such, we begin that discussion today. Now, today, we're going to get feedback from the board. You'll hear, we will all hear, and the staff and the public will all hear what we think, knowing TriMet, knowing our community, knowing the challenges that are facing the agency and this region in the coming years. And I have a series of questions that I want to put forward to get some initial feedback so that we can consider a revised draft job description at the next week's board meeting. Now, you have those two documents before you, the job description and the board's roles and responsibilities. The first thing I'd like to do is direct us towards the job description itself. As President Warner noted, this document before us is what was approved the last time there was a general manager search. And so it has not been altered from that time. The notations of colors and the font that the board members have seen simply denote where there are some legislative requirements that are in the document itself, just to distinguish what is baked in by law and what has been added for the first iteration that we're going to use to have the discussion. And I'm going to do my best to manage discussion format between where I navigate board. Please help identify that and feel free to jump in. I'm going to leave my microphone unmuted as I'm gathering comments. But if it gets background noise, also let me know. I'll try to do my best to navigate that. But I believe the sound is clear over here and the connection is clear. So I'd like to begin with a quick sound check from everybody. And from the board, I should say, and just a quick hello. And then I'll present the first question, which will be, what's missing from the job description? And so just say hello real quick and we'll go in order of districts. So let's start with District 1.
So this is Bruce and yes, can you hear me?
Sound check.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So you want me to talk about thoughts on the positions?
Not yet. Not yet. We'll open general. I just want to get a quick one. I'm District 2. This is Ozzy. I've been talking plenty. District 3?
That's me, Linda.
District 4? Let's see here, who are we missing? Who's District 5? Is that Keith? Is that you?
I got it finally.
Just checking, just want to make sure. So everyone have their trigger finger ready on the board, okay? I heard you, Keith. Coming in good. We don't have a camera and that's all right. Want to make sure we can hear you though, Keith. If you want to turn on cameras for the board, the other thing I was going to say is you could do the hand thing. If you have a comment, you can raise the hand. We'll do our best to manage this traffic.
Good. You'll see me in a moment.
Thank you, thank you. And District 6? And I believe that must be what the seat was that Mr. Stovall had. So I'll move to District 7.
That would be Clockmouth County. Hi, everyone. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Director Y. So as I mentioned when Keith introduced himself, we're going to be having a virtual facilitated session. We've got a good chunk of time to talk. I've got about six, seven questions that I'll be asking. And we'll spend a few minutes with each question. And I intend to hear from each of you, each of the questions. If there's something you absolutely cannot live with, that's an important moment to make sure you have a comment in any one of the questions. We may not have, you may not have all of the answers to all the questions now. This is our first pass at sharing our thoughts, but these are the important questions we have for you. The idea from which today is that we're going to be having much greater clarity amongst each other since we don't get to have anything outside of this public forum. We would like to hear from the board at large, mostly about what are the ways in which we'll be interacting between the board itself, the committee itself, and your thoughts about how we get to interact with the community at large. So we will all get a chance to speak. And I just wanted to lay all that out before we jump into the details. So with that, I'd like to go ahead and begin with the first question. I don't have an order of appearance, but this is where we get to begin fumbling through the hand raising and respectfully giving each other a time to speak. I will keep track of comments as best I can. And before we part for the next question, I'll make sure to open it up if anyone has not spoken or has any final thoughts.
Could you raise the summary a little bit? I can only see, I don't think I can see the complete. There we go. Thank you.
So this first question, we're really looking for what's missing from the job description, recognizing the last search was three years ago. What are essential knowledge, skills, and abilities that we need to make sure we are looking for in this round? So again, none of this guarantees anything as far as the final result, but this is our opportunity to really begin articulating the qualities that we consider very important to us in this search. I don't see any hands raised. I'm not, it's not beneath me to call on folks.
Keith had his hand raised.
Yeah. I think that something that, you know, and I understand this is a basic responsibility of the general manager, but there's some things, there's some nuances that need to be added. I believe to help with the, to have a, an organization that runs smoothly, cohesively, and all parts are working together, just like an engine on a car. Everything works together to get that car moving and to get it stopped if need be, or turn right or turn left. And in that, I believe the general manager needs to be someone that has has a background and history of working in collaboration with other entities besides management. So someone that has respective organized labor. Because I come from a background where organized labor and management work cohesively together, realizing they're all in the same boat. And the only way that they can get that boat down the river or down, get that car down the road is to work together and cohesively. That doesn't mean that we have some bumps in the road. That's going to happen. I realize that. But I want someone that's going to come in that has a respect of organized labor and knows how to work collaboratively with organized labor as well. I also need someone that's going to make sure that we have an implementation of diversity and inclusion, a program that is stellar, a program that talks about all employees, whether I'm exempt or those that are hourly, those that belong to the collective bargaining unit. That everybody understands that diversity and inclusion and respect and implicit bias, all those things have no place in the workplace. That they're going, that if someone that has that track record of being able to bring people of different opinions and different attitudes together for the good of the whole, that's what I'm looking for. All the, all this other stuff really is basic. I get that. And it needs to, and that has to be there. But there are additional supplements that need to go along with this position and the general manager because, and I'll be, I'll be quite clear. Replacing the general manager that I believe has been working to achieve those things. And I don't want to bring someone in that has all these things that we've looked at before backwards, forwards, up and down, sideways. But they don't have respective labor. They don't have the collaboration and coalition building skills that are necessary to make this machine all work together. I believe a happy employee is a productive employee. And so all employees, black, white, LGBTQ, all employees need to feel that they're comfortable and welcomed in the workplace. And that, that has to be something that comes from the leadership. And it has to be important to the leadership. And so if that's not a criteria that the leadership exemplifies that we're looking at, then I would say no.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the comment. And that's the benefit of jumping in first, board. You get to steal the thunder. Anyone else have any thoughts to add and build on?
I do.
Thank you.
And I have my hand up, but I, I don't know for what that's worth. Hi, everyone. And Director Edwards, thank you so much for getting, getting the conversation started. So in addition to just some of the things that Director Edwards have outlined, some of the things that I will be looking for is someone with real lived experience in being transit dependent, I think would be ideal if they are going to be managing a public transit agency. I also believe really strongly in someone who has demonstrated experience in advancing racial justice in public institutions. I name that because I think that talking about racial justice is not quite the same as just getting a DEI program started. Although DEI work is, you know, also really important, I think the next really arc of, right, making sure that all voices, all communities, all identities are being honored and heard is really working towards racial justice. And I think that in the 21st century, we have leaders out there who who can bring those qualities and skills forward, particularly here to Oregon. And then I think the third piece that I really wanted to highlight is someone who can have an understanding of what is happening with our current pandemic crisis and someone who can really collaborate with public health and have, you know, and have a plan, right, have an effective plan around TriMet, you know, operating our business model, but also someone who can pay attention to this global pandemic that is still going to continue. So those are just the three things that I have and I look forward to discussing more.
Fantastic. Thank you very much, Director Y. And just for the record, I just want to point out again, for the benefit of staff, the public, and the board, this is fully getting recorded and staff is taking some notes. I'm doing my best to scribble along and capture some of these themes that are coming through so we can kind of sanity check with the staff's notes and we'll have the recording. Thank you very much. Continue. Let's see. And pardon with the hand raising. Let me try to get better at keeping tabs of that, but the list is quite long and the board members aren't necessarily, they're in alphabetical order, I think, so I'm having to just scroll up and down. Anyone else?
Bruce has his hand up.
Oh goodness, I got to get better at this. All right, we'll go Director Warner and then Director Bowman.
Okay, thank you. Again, good comments by Keith and Kathy. When I look at this, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in this position description, as you pointed out, it's boilerplate that needs to be there per state law. I think we've done a good job of establishing the basics, but the things that we're talking about now are the things that we really do need to have understood in terms of what we'd like. And the things that I see in the knowledge, skills, and ability, and maybe you're going to get to that later, but along with what Kathy was saying is that, you know, there is, I'd love to see somebody that has an understanding of the necessary strategic and tactical changes to address emergencies, the unanticipated reduction in revenues and the community concerns that we've got going on. That's just that there's, there's, there's big changes and we've got challenges ahead of us. And having somebody that's gone through some of those would be very, very helpful. The second thing I would love to see is I would love to have somebody that actually has thought about the vision and can envision the future of public transit and how to help the region and the state meet their environmental goals and objectives to reduce greenhouse gases and reduce vehicle trips. And so it's good to have somebody that actually is thinking outside of the box a bit on this one. And I'd love to, you know, talk with, when we get to talking to candidates about some of the things that they see needs to be done. The third area is, is I think that as a result of COVID, result of the reductions in revenues, you know, we're going to need to look at our service delivery models. And anybody who's had an ability to lead kind of the service delivery model changes to address travel patterns, housing, and employment as a result of emergencies like COVID and just the ongoing development would be very happy or be very helpful. And then the last thing is I would love to, again, see somebody who actually understands development and has an understanding and even demonstrated success in leveraging transit real estate holdings into ways to help provide a needed, affordable housing and transit service to areas and facilities servicing those who are experiencing homelessness. So those are ones that's popped out to me just to kind of, what's going on today. So I'm going to stop there.
Thank you very much, Director Warner. Director Bowman?
Yes, thank you. I'll say first that I want to acknowledge, I think that the current position description actually is very comprehensive and at least in general terms, covers a lot of what we've discussed. So thank you to those who prepared this last time. When I think about what the position description should include, I have to start with thinking about what our priorities need to be in the, in the next few years. And certainly safely, safely bringing back riders, I think, is a really high priority, if not the highest priority. And so some of the skills around that would be public outreach, messaging, marketing, operations. We've, you know, I've appreciated that Doug has focused on things like on-time performance as a way to build kind of public confidence in transit. I also think about coordination with public officials from federal right down to local levels. That's going to be very important in bringing transit ridership back. But this, picking up on something that Bruce said, I think that finding an executive who has some experience with turning around a business that faces really deep challenges would be helpful. Because fact is, if this was a private business that had lost 60, 70% of its customers, we would think that things were quite dire. And happily, financially, we're in quite good shape at the moment. But, but we do have to bring back those riders and having a leader who has some experience with rebuilding a business that faces severe challenges, I think, would be very helpful. But that would include building on some of our existing strengths. Of course, this is a very strong organization. So you build on those strengths, but perhaps find new opportunities for growth. I agree with Keith, close cooperation with labor, very important, and a really strong focus on customers. I also, another priority would be reimagining transit in a post-COVID world, being nimble but prudent about new opportunities. Something else I think about is that a strong downtown is really important to TriMet's success. And downtown Portland is definitely struggling right now. So I think that some of the skills around that would be collaborating with government and business and other, and labor and others on how to revitalize downtown. Doing that would help TriMet as well. Again, thinking about economic development. Some of the other strengths that we need are folks who understand safety and security and have a good record on those issues. We've, TriMet has an ongoing effort to update its information technology. So that's a, that's a, if we can find someone with a background in that, I think it would be helpful. I think the challenge we have is if everything is a priority, then nothing is a priority, right? We really do have to, have to pick among all of our priorities when we think about the skills we're looking for. And so I think something that's less important right now is an executive with experience completing capital projects. The Southwest Corridor is off the table for now. We're going to continue to have capital projects like the Division Transit Project, but at least for the very short term, we're not going to be building a new light rail line. So I think as we kind of rank skills, kind of bringing home an enormous capital project like a new light rail line is less important. That's it.
Thank you, Director Bowman. Okay, now Director Simmons, do we have, I didn't see a hand, but I, oh, I see. No, thank you.
You know, one of the things about coming in at this time is everybody has said things that I agree with. Director Edwards, I mean, I couldn't agree Director Edwards, I mean, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, we have to have somebody who can work effectively in a highly collaborative environment and that seeks input. And also Kathy Way in terms of the issues around diversity and also social justice. You know, I agree with that totally. Bruce, I mean, you almost stole everything that I would say would be really important. The one that I think I agree with the most has to do with somebody who is visionary and look to see not only where the future of transportation is going, but what the future is in terms of the tri-county area here in Portland. And I can't emphasize enough, we need to really look at the service delivery model, and I think that's part and parcel into our business plan. I mean, I have said for some time, I'd like to know what is a reasonable length of time to commute? And we don't have that, and basically, our system has been built on everybody comes downtown. And we really need to think about how are we serving people, not just that want to come downtown, but throughout our various regions. We need to find out where people want to go, we need to find out when they want to go there, we need to ask what, you know, not only what time they want to go, but how much money they're willing to spend, what's important in terms of safety and security. And then they have to be able to trust the system. And so it really is going to be somebody who at least understands what the factors are that go into evaluating service delivery. The whole financial model, I agree with that, we have to look at that and understand not only, you know, what can we do more, but how do we preserve what we've already got, the state of good repair? So this is a large, complex organization. Not everybody has had experience with light rail or rail. So, you know, we need to have somebody who at least understands the transit, understands and has a track record of pursuing excellence within their agency. So I think I'll leave it right there at that. I was on the search, I'm one of the board members that served on the search committee the last time, and worked with the board in terms of developing what we're looking at today. And that's not to say that this is something we throw out, but I think that there's a lot of really good work here, and we need to look at where, what's missing, what's missing from what is here, and some of what's already been said is here, maybe it needs to be reworded in a different way. And so I look forward to working with all of you to make sure this process is, reflects our values and our wishes as well as those wishes of the community. I really appreciate the process that we're looking at at this particular point in time. So that's what I have.
Thank you, thank you. All right, and I'll bring in the caboose on this one. Great comments, I think it's been well established on record, there's a huge interest in the collaborative spirit and the people's skills necessary to navigate that. I echo that sentiment, and the emotional intelligence, the cultural competency required to navigate working with diverse coalitions, especially coalitions made up of folks from very different lived experiences, I think that's critical. There's a few things I wanted to bring up, didn't, the one thing that's most important to me is the vision, someone that's really looking forward for not only the future of transit, but really looking specifically at the future of our transit system within our region, recognizing the specifics that make the needs of downtown different from the needs of East County, of the West Side, of the South and the North. There are very different kinds of conditions, and we do need someone that can look at the entire system and have a vision for the future that can make the entire system functional for the entire region. That's what I'd like to see, and for that, I believe that requires some knowledge about the renewable energy industry and how we're going to translate our decarbonization plan into an on-the-ground reality. How that is going to mix with the future of transit and, you know, the sharing economy and the leveraging of technology. And finally, how a successful transit system interacts with successful land use planning. This goes back to the development skill set, the ability to understand land use, transit-oriented development, multimodal transportation planning, and how we build partnerships with different providers of transit solutions so that we have an integrated experience for the public that works. To me, having a vision that kind of can consider those factors and bring that to on-the-ground knowledge within our region is going to be critical. So, next question, we, thank you very much, and great insight, it's fantastic to hear from the board in this way. The next question comes back to how we take the same idea and just make sure that we have brought in the next set of voices. What other, here, let me jump to my question so I don't mess it up. So as we think about the board considering and approving this draft job description next week, is there anyone in your district that you would like to hear from and that you can reach out to? And I'm just going to go here by district, and I'm going to go backwards. So District Seven, Director Y.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez. I just have a clarifying question, I guess, on that question. So are you looking for groups, organizations? Because I'm just saying, because Clackamas County is a huge county, right? So are you looking for specifics or?
Do you have, well, you, I'm looking for any sort of direction that we can provide either staff or something that you know you can, you can commit to doing yourself in preparation for next week's meeting. Just because we know that there's a lot of folks interested in reaching out, some folks have wanted to chime in on some of this work, and we might have the ability to say, let's make sure we hear from these groups, and I'd be happy to help, or I would really appreciate it if we haven't already asked them that we do. There's many organizations that we have relationships, establish relationships with through the agency. It's, it'd be silly not to leverage those connection points, but this is an opportunity to say, I think we need to ask so-and-so, and if we don't have them already, I believe we should, I'd like to, I'd like to reach out to them and see what they think.
Absolutely, yes. I'm sorry, Kathy, can I just jump in for a sec? I do want to clarify that, that once we approve a draft job description, then we're going to take that out to the community. So this will be, so what we're focusing on is outreach that's going to take place after our approval. After our approval, we're going to get input from the community, what else, you know, how should we refine the job description as we then start the search process?
Great, thank you so much for the clarification. Yes, I am proud to be a Clackamas County resident. I, you know, think that, number one, engaging our elected officials is going to be very important, and that, you know, we also, we need to, we really need to reach out to them and see, you know, what are the needs that they're experiencing in, you know, the boards and in the places of power that they hold, particularly in Clackamas, because we are, you know, an urban and rural place to live. You know, I will also name that, given some of the different rhetoric that has been said by one Clackamas County Commissioner in particular, that was very racist and Islamophobic and homophobic. You know, I think we, as a county, are really trying to work towards, again, you know, recognizing that all communities and all people are valued and respected in our county. And so I think, for that reason, I think, you know, I would be very interested in hearing from my elected officials and my colleagues what their thoughts are around what they would like to see in terms of not only just public transit, of course, and the services, but also transit justice, and how that transit justice connects to people of color, low-income folks in our county, transit-dependent riders, and again, folks who just have not been traditionally served or traditionally included in decision-making. So, and also that includes youth and young people as well. There are a couple of different community-based organizations in our county that are doing amazing work around housing, around, again, community organizing. So I have a list that I could probably, you know, send via email, but, you know, one of the other organizations that I think is going to be really critical, I think, in this conversation are also, I'm sorry, again, folks who focus on, you know, I think racial justice. So Unite Oregon is one of those organizations that I think are starting to do some really amazing groundwork in our county, and that would be another organization that I think we should approach. So hopefully, I modeled that answer correctly in terms of what you were hoping to get, and I'd be happy to reach out to any of my colleagues around this conversation.
Thank you, thank you. Direct, I mean, District Six does not have representation here right now. I will recognize that there is several members within the Transit Equity Advisory Committee who do have their central locations within District Six. They do represent constituents more broadly than that, but I just wanted to put that out on record, that the Transit Equity Advisory Committee has been reached out to about this document and has provided some feedback, and that line remains open. So, you know, barring the absence of a District Six representative on the call today, I simply wanted to recognize that we have not ignored District Six within our consideration. And if any elected official or public organization is from District Six, that is Gresham, Gresham at Large, East County, north of Clackamas, and I don't have the best description of the boundary, but we do have the boundary online, I just wanted to recognize that you are not left out. District Five, Director Edwards, what comes to mind for you?
What comes to mind for me is that I do have some, a couple of politicians in my area, of course Metro, Lynn Peterson, and we happen to have this one lady you might be know of, Speaker of the House, and Senator Frederick as well. We also have some community groups, and that's who I really look to, to have input, and that's the young people especially, such as Pau, well, formerly known as Powell. And because the young people are the ones that are really going to have to, you know, utilize the systems that are in place, and that are going to be in place going forward. So I really want to listen to them and hear what they have to say, because I think that's critical, important, and important. There's other groups, of course, there's the NAACP, there's the Urban League, and other community groups that I think we need to make sure that we listen and are, hear their issues and concerns. But I think that for the most part, we have most of those folks that have been, we've already reached out to and are given an audience, and, but I think we need to continue that and make sure that we listen and not have preconceived notions about what we think should happen, because they're the ones that are using the system, and they're the ones that are going to be impacted the most.
Thank you, thank you. District Four, and pardon me, did I mess this up? Is that Director Simmons?
Nope, that's me, Lori.
Director Baumann, thank you. I got them out of order here, thank you.
Yes, definitely, District Four, Southeast Portland primarily, extending a little ways into Milwaukee, and even a little ways into Northeast Portland, actually. So I definitely agree, once we, once the board has approved this position description and we take it out to the public for public feedback, I agree that elected officials and legislators were important, state legislators, you know, passed House Bill 2017, that's provided so much support for us with the original intention to expand service, and for now, it's being used to maintain service. And so I think they have a very strong interest in our leadership going forward. Certainly in Southeast Portland, we have social service providers that we should consult with, I think of, I think of Apano, Community Vision, Inc., which serves people with disabilities. St. Francis Dining Hall is in Southeast Portland, and it serves a community that is by and large transit-dependent. I also, well, since I've been the board liaison to CATH, the Committee on Accessible Transportation, I'll mention that CATH is very interested in participating in identifying the skills and experience that we're going to be looking for in a general manager. And then we want to, we want to reach out to our, the community in other ways, you know, the people who ride bikes and pedestrians and people who travel in all different methods. We want to, we want to hear what's important to them as we undertake this effort as well.
Thank you, Director Baumann, and pardon my confusion with the districts. I fixed my notes. Director Simmons, District Three?
Trying to get this thing unmuted, it keeps disappearing on me, and evidently, my finger doesn't, doesn't actually trip it.
We can hear you, Linda.
Thanks. Well, now you can, because I finally got it to work. Who I think we need to hear from is transit-dependent riders in total. I think there needs to be a way to either survey them or invite them to some kind of forum. Elected officials, obviously, in Washington County, given the fact that I represent a part of the district that is more rural than urban, and probably has, at least where I live, the least amount of transit available provided by TriMet. And so I think a group we need to hear from is seniors. I live in a community that has a very organized seniors population, it'd be interesting to know what they think of the qualities need to be. I agree with Lori about people who ride bikes and other modes of transportation. So elected officials, of course. So that would be, you know, I mean, everything everybody has said, I also indicate that all of the organizations that already are represented within the Transit Equity Advisory Committee, Lori mentioned CATH, I think maybe that's already a given, but really, I'd like to hear from people in more rural areas. Kathy, you represent a rural area, we both shared feelings as though there needs to be a way to provide transit to them. So it would be interesting to get some perspective from people who currently don't have transit and what they would want in terms of a transit system, and what kind of background that they think would be necessary in order to be able to deliver that.
Thank you. Thank you. So I represent District Two, that is everything from Old Nama Village north into downtown, it includes the Southwest Hills and goes westbound to capture both sides of the Highway 26. So I have some of the, some of the most underserved parts within the region. So I have some of the, some of the most underserved parts within the region as far as, you know, dense residential areas. And I have some of the most served parts of the region within the downtown core. And I really wanna hear from both sides of that equation right now. They have very important concerns and very different concerns. So I'd really, I'd really like to hear from the City of Portland and Metro. I know that they're interested, and so I encourage someone from, from the office to provide the resource, and I intend on reaching out to both agencies. I'd like to hear from some community constituency groups within the downtown area. There's many different kinds of organizations around it, but I wanna look at some neighborhood-focused groups. So there are still some active folks within the Neighborhood Association downtown, in downtown, and in Old Town, in Chinatown, as well as the Getting Together Coalition, which I think has a lot of interest that isn't exclusive to the region, but I think can potentially be really good feedback for things impacting the downtown region. I also recognize that there's some really, there's some high interest from underserved areas that are, you know, very residential, that have experienced some growth. And I'm thinking about places like Hillsborough and North Hillsborough that have a huge need for capacity, already have an established kind of relationship with land use, and I think deserve to have consideration. So I'm gonna be reaching out to the City of Beaverton and Hillsborough and some community organizations that have some constituency within the West District. I think that's gonna be critical to consider in this round. And District One, President Warner?
Thank you. Again, as Linda said, most of the kind of dialogue has covered what I would say. But obviously, the cities and counties, the elected folks and some of the key appointed officials too. In Washington County, and my district is Beaverton West. And, you know, I look at, there's a lot of housing organizations out there. I think the housing organizations, we ought to be talking with them. We talked about the transit-dependent, the folks with disabilities. I think those are gonna be important. I think like Central Cultural out here in Cornelius is a really good organization to talk to. And the things that I haven't heard people mention is I really wanna make sure that we we outreach and have an opportunity to talk with our businesses out here and around the metro region. I think about in Washington County, the West Side Economic Alliance. We've got major employers like Intel and Nike who rely on our transit service and pay a big part of our bill. We need to make sure they're engaged. Portland Business Alliance Downtown. And then I also think, at least in Washington County and throughout, is higher ed is something we ought to be talking to them. Out here in Washington County, we have Pacific and Portland Community College are big presence and rely on our services a lot. And there's just a lot of, a lot of areas that we should explore. And I would just encourage staff and the board to take a look at the, all of the organizations we engaged in our reimagining of public safety and security on the transit system and make sure we don't forget anybody there. But again, as you said, Ozzy, I'm prepared and willing to be engaged. It might even be great to have a couple board members at a time engaged so we, so we have a more than one hearing from some of these folks that we go out and talk to. So I think, I think we have a rich number of folks who would like to talk with us, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Thank you, President Warner, and I appreciate the comments of the entire board around this. I'm gonna, I wanna confess, we're kind of jumping ahead and cheating a little bit. And as far as getting, picking your brain for voices that are critical to be hearing from because there will be multiple opportunities throughout this process for voices from the board and from voices throughout the region to chime in on this process. So this is a window into not just folks that we might wanna hear from regarding the job description, but it's also voices we wanna hear from regarding this process, regarding the agency. And so any, any folks that are out there that might hear about their organization or hear their organization named, consider this in part an invitation to create a contact point, create a line of communication for us. We are very much interested in that, and some of the organizations and agencies listed, you know, could be made up of many, many people. So it would be great to have that connection and to be able to make one with you in partnership. So I invite those folks that are out there that might have heard their name, and even those that didn't, that want to, to reach out and, you know, provide a line to hear about what's important to you. And especially if there's something you're not hearing from the board because we are saying a lot of things right now, and as we craft this job description, it's good to have a list of all that we're looking for. And we can certainly hope to find the candidate that fires all those cylinders for us. We will have a robust process to get to the best of what we can, but first, we must know what we want. So with that, I'm moving into the, a little bit of a change of topic here. There's gonna be some community, broad community engagement in the weeks ahead around the job description as well as in how we're crafting that touch point. So right now, we're just gonna be looking for any initial feedback on the draft, draft job description, should anybody in the community have it. The document is still up for public view, and the comments from today's discussion will be available as well. Let's now turn to the second document. The, this is the Roles and Responsibilities of the Board. So thank you very much, Jeff. I believe that's you. Thank you so much for pulling that up. So let's, let's first, you all received this document in advance. You'd all, I believe some of you had an opportunity to look at parts of the document and provide some input. I wanna recognize this is a living document that the members of the committee began. It was brought to some, to President Warner, it was brought to some folks on staff to ensure we're incorporating some, some of the right sort of perspectives leading up to today. But this is our chance to hear from the board at large. And so I'd like to open it up just for general comments before we get into the specific pieces of the document. And just keep in mind, this is, the goal of this section of the discussion is to be able to walk away with clarity about how the board and the committee are gonna be working and interacting in this process. The goal here is that we come out with enough clarity that this can be provided to anybody and they can see how the two entities are supposed to interact. So it should hopefully be able to explain itself, and we'll do, we'll, we'll be incorporating all this, all this feedback into a final document that we'll be presenting to the board at large. And that, that'll help us set the framework by which the process will unfold. Keep in mind, the ultimate moment will be that the board will be making the final decision and selecting a general manager as the, as the job entails, as it were. So what comments does the board, do board members have? And I'd like to begin with, let's see, Director Edwards?
Okay, comments regarding what?
Do you have any general comments or, before we get into the specific pieces of this thing?
No, I think, I think we're going about this in the correct way. I'm, I think that I'm pleased with the process. I'm pleased that, you know, the community has an involvement here. And I guess I was a little bit concerned about some of the correspondence we received from organizations in the community and from politicians as well that didn't think we were up to the task. And that, that just concerned me a little bit, that we were just going to this blind and to say that we're gonna, you know, it's our job to find a director, and we're not gonna let the community weigh in or let any, anyone else that, that are, even though they're not directly involved with this, that we weren't gonna allow folks to have some input into our vetting process. And so that's, that was a little bit of an affront, and, and like I say, that, I was taken aback a little bit by that. But I understand that, you know, coming out of the aids that we've come out of in the last four years in this country, that there's not a lot of trust in, in government entities or quasi-government entities that do what they're charged to do. So I get that. But I think we have a very diverse board. We have a board that, that respects one another, we listen to one another, we come from different places, and we, we have a very diverse and inclusive thought process that we go through in dealing with all the different things we have to deal with. And I don't think this would be any different, certainly simply because of the monumental impact that this would have if we didn't go through the process and make the right decision based on what is needed for our community. And, and I think that, you know, I just think that we should always be respected for that. I certainly respect the members of the board, and I'm pleased to be serving on, on a board with such diversity and diverse thoughts.
Thanks for your comments, Director Edwards. Director Y, I'd like to kneel to the floor to you.
Yes, thank you so much. I feel like, you know, I think the, having so much, I think, interest by community to want to be involved in, in this process is, I think it's a good thing that, you know, so many people care about public transit and TRIMET. And I know that sometimes, you know, it could be a little daunting, right? Because our responsibility is so huge for the entire region to pick the right leader with the right values and all the qualifications that we highlighted earlier. So it's a, it's a big task for all of us, but I also agree with Director Edwards in that I feel like we are, you know, the right composition of board members to really take on this big job. And, and I also just really wanna just continue to thank the community at large as well for just continuing to stay engaged. You know, we are your appointed public representatives, and so this is, this is our job to, you know, to listen to you, to take the feedback, and to have a transparent process. I think that, you know, I think for me, I just have a couple of more clarifying questions around sort of roles, responsibilities, timeline. I think the big pieces that I'll be looking for again is just sort of that public outreach, you know, that consistent public outreach, that feedback, right? Who internally from our team will continue to lead that? Where do, where do our board voices come in to give feedback? Where do the community voices come in and give feedback? So I think there's this entire sort of communication piece, quite frankly, internally and externally that we have to, you know, I think also be aware of and keep in mind. But I am just happy that this is, what, 20, 20 days into the new year, and we are just starting this meeting off with having, I think, some really genuine conversations about what we would like to see. And we have already received a ton of feedback and letters and all of that already from different community groups. So I just continue to encourage that because that's why we're here, is to do this job.
Thank you. Director Baumann, I saw your hand was raised at some point. I'm not sure if you still had comment relevant, but I'll go move to you.
Okay, thank you, yes. On the roles and responsibilities. I first wanted to, to acknowledge that Linda, Director Simmons, provided kind of the impetus for this document and the first draft of it. So, so thank you to her. I think it's, the, the hiring the general manager is our most important duty, but beyond that, how we go about doing it, doing it is not set out in the code or in the statutes. And so I think there's a lot of wisdom around us adopting, or at least getting a consensus, general consensus on our roles and responsibilities going forward. How, how board members will be involved, how the search committee, kind of what the search committee duties will be. And then this also, I think, really hopefully breaks out what the staff will be doing and what the, how the public will be involved. So I do, I do urge everybody to take a look at this, and if there's anything you think should be, please let us know because this, for those of, those of us, the three of us on the search committee, this is gonna be kind of our roadmap going forward in terms of who does what. It's absolutely necessary in a process, a process like this to do some delegation. And so some of the, some of the steps are delegated to the search committee, but of course, the most important steps are, still reside with the board, and that will not change. And I'll also say, as you all know, we are in the process of soliciting proposals from executive search firms. And that's gonna be, that, the search firm is listed here as a, as an entity that has certain roles and responsibilities too. And that's a really important first step because they're, they're gonna help us. They're gonna advise us on how to carry out some of these processes. But, but I just, anyway, please know that, that we were anxious to, yeah, include the community. I mean, that's a very, very important part of this process.
Thank you, Director Baumann, and I echo the gratitude sentiment to Director Simmons for shepherding this document and for the input everyone provided, just to bring it together. It will be a roadmap for us. So to, to board members that have, have not had a chance to chime in on this yet, I do wanna echo the sentiment of, pretty here for the framework. In the Board of Directors, section number one, you will see that there's some essential functions that the board will serve here. There is the approval of the position description and the selection of the general manager. The, the, for the most part, the other areas are advise and provide input and, and support essentially the work that leads up to the recommendations for a general manager. The, there is a commitment and structure in those participating and structured public outreach. So unless any, anybody on the board is specifically not interested in supporting that part or performing that function, I will take, you know, no, no comment around things like the commitments we're putting you to as something you would be opposed to. So if, if you're not opposed to those things, that's fantastic. If you are, this is a great time to at least let us know if it's, it's not an essential function, it's not a required duty, but it is something that we found to be an important part of this process. So if you disagree, let us know. With that, I think, is it all right? Let me see, did I? Yeah, with that, I'd like to open it up to Director Simmons, since we talked you up a little bit. Could you please say a few things, and then we'll go to Director, to President Warner, pardon me?
Yeah. The thing that I would mention is that the role of the Executive Search Committee, I know some of you have indicated what's the timeline. And I know we've gotten feedback from the community about they don't want us to rush this process. And, and we're not gonna rush the process. We're gonna take whatever time it takes to, to identify and vet and potentially engage the community, well, and to engage the community and then to actually recommend and hire a new general manager. And that's gonna take some time. And it, I feel, and I think the feeling of Ozzy and Lori is that that's one of the roles of the executive search firm, is to help us understand what, what is a realistic timeframe. And then, and, and also, what are some of the best mechanisms for enlisting feedback from the community? You know, what are the best ways to demonstrate transparency in the process? There's a lot of voices, and some, and they're not all saying the same thing, you know. So, you know, how do we, how do we identify those that are the broadest, representing the broadest view of the constituents and which TRIMET serves? So that's the part that I would say. I'm looking forward to seeing the responses from the invited search firms to see what, what they're proposing. And then, and then we and then we hope, and I may be misspeaking, but we hope to actually engage an executive search firm by the 27th of January. And so we will have more clarity then and there will be more opportunity for us as a board to meet an executive session as well as in public session to iron out some of these viewpoints that we receive in terms of what goes into the final job description and and how to actually carry out the public comment.
Thank you. Thank you. And I see that Director Edwards raised his hand, but I'm I promised Director Warner, President Warner, the next, so we'll go to President Warner and then Director Edwards.
Thank you. And Linda, you took all the things I was going to say also. So nicely done. First off, on the on putting those roles and responsibilities together, I think it's a good piece of work. And it is a document that's going to evolve and change as we as we get the search firm under contract. And I think that's the thing I would stress again, that we're right beginning of the process. We're just getting started here. And when we get that search firm, we also expect them to give us some advice on what is the time we really need to to do this work. And and again, they may have some ideas on outreach and involvement that we've not even thought of. But I think this is a is a is a good layout of where we where we are. And I think it's a great starting point. And hopefully the folks listening, you know, the groups that are and individuals are are looking at this will will give us any feedback on this too. I think the other thing that you'll see very clearly in this is there's going to be a lot of outreach and involvement with the community. And one of the things we heard last last time we went through this was there's a great interest to be involved in an interview committee to to look at the candidates, the finalists in this. And and I think we need to figure out a way to to do that. And I think this outlines that. And I suspect with our search firm retained and and as we get into this further, we'll figure out what who do we want to have on that community interview or ribbon committee or whatever else that that would can help us make the best choice ever. So I think this is a good starting point and I agree with everything you said, Linda. And thank you to the the search committee for putting us together. This is a is a good roadmap for everybody to understand kind of where we are and but obviously understanding it's going to get amended and changed over the next few weeks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Director Edwards?
Yes, thank you. And Bruce, thank you. You took my thunder. But that was my question regarding the composition of the Community Interview Committee. What's that going to look like? How many folks are going to be on there? What input do we have that's going to impact that committee in regard to the community members that are going to be on that committee? Also, that we've kind of talked around it, but I I think we're going to have an interim general manager. And that's something that I think we we need to start looking at as well immediately because that's going to take place before we have a permanent general manager. And so I think that's, you know, we need to look at that, look at how we're going to go about that process. And I don't think that's a process that we have to necessarily engage the community. We're talking interim. We're not talking about a permanent position. But that's something that's going to come about way before we have a general manager. And I think we need to start really focusing on that. Someone that's going to take on that those responsibilities and that we find a general manager.
Thank you for the comment, Director Edwards. It's it's I'm sure that President Warner has a response to how that will be incorporated into this transition plan. We know that our general manager, Kelsey, has a contract ending in March. And so we are, we feel pretty, pretty confident in recognizing we will not have finalized this process by then. There is a conversation that I think will be taking place, if I'm not mistaken, next week as part of the agenda in discussing the approval of the draft job description. But I'm not certain. I do know that 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 will be, that that's a process that will be taking place outside of the focus of today's discussion. And so in that vein, I will recognize that the document before you, and and this is very much for for folks outside the board as well, is something that is an open-ended document right now because we have not hired the search firm and they are going to be an essential ingredient in, as Director Simmons recognized, elaborating the process timeline, the the way in which we are going to incorporate the interview committee. And so there's going to be, I think, a lot of polishing and chiseling of those roles and responsibilities, especially in the section around the search firm and the interview committee. There will be opportunities for the board to chime in on these things as as section one indicates. But the the unfinished pieces of this are those that are where the search firm and the committee's voices have to be brought in. So I want to recognize that, again, this is not necessarily a a formal board document that we approve and seal, you know, and frame up while we while we read it every day. There are pieces of it that are going to be refined as we move into the the section regarding the interview committee. So that was something that was more a general comment about the process. As far as the the document itself, I really appreciate the the effort that has led to this together. I think if we are, if we feel good about the section one and section two, there is a lot of space for refining all of the other sections, if you noticed. What we'd love to make sure of is that the relationship between the board, search committee and the board is clear. And as 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 section one indicates, for those on the board, as we start looking at the community engagement plan, as we start looking at things like the interview questions, there will be opportunities for the board to look at documents and provide input. We we fully recognize this is going to be a not a small haul and we will leverage the effort of board for, this is why we want to leverage the effort of board for public outreach. Because it allows us to make sure that you have a direct touch point, you can hear from constituents directly and you have the opportunity to bring your input about all these critical moments where we're making decisions. So that's something that we are happy to recognize in this document now. So I just wanted to put that out there. I don't, I I really like where it's landed. I I think it provides enough clarity that I believe the board, search committee could move forward in starting to bring a search firm to the process and get them to start elaborating an action plan for how to engage the community, how to properly look for diverse candidates. So I'm glad where we are now. Those are all the comments I have. I don't really have further edits to it at this point. I'm curious to know if anyone else does, though.
I see Director Wei has her hand up.
Thank you for commenting out, Director Wei. Director Wei, the floor is yours.
Oh, sorry, I've been on mute. I have been on mute this whole time.
Welcome, welcome.
Hi. So I, yes, I just have a couple of things that I've been just continuing to reflect on. So one of the things is just naming the current existing committees, the formal committees that TRIMET, you know, that we're a part of, TAC, IMPACT, CAT, et cetera. Because I just didn't, I don't think I saw that under the community engagement part is, you know, really engaging, I think, with our current and existing committees to get their feedback and input in this process. I also really agree that we, as we are all unpaid volunteers in this work, that we absolutely need a hiring search firm to, right, to really like help us, help us get everything in order. And I think along those lines, I would like also that selection process to be as open and transparent and as communicative as possible. So you know, thank you so much, Director Baumann, for already sort of giving us, you know, a little bit of a, here's a pool of folks we're looking at. But I I would like to also have a public discussion around, you know, who like, who are the interests, right? What are the firms that we're looking at? Because I think that it's really important for me to highlight firms that have, you know, obviously, a clear success record, right, who can bring diverse, high-quality talent for us to consider. So that's all of the search things that are related to the search firm that I also, again, really believe that there needs to be some discussion with us as a board around just who we are deciding on. And I also just don't know quite yet in the in this particular industry, because I'm also still learning, if we just need to hire one search firm or if we need to hire additional consultants to help support with this work. So I think that is, you know, I mean, I'd love to hear from other board members what you think the benefit or the cons would be in hiring additional consultants to to help with some of these other pieces. Because there are just so many pieces, right? Just even in this document that can feel quite overwhelming in terms of what we need to really do. And then the last thing is, you know, what are the plans that we have around, again, continued communication with the public? I'm thinking the website is always something that, you know, we can refer folks to of here's our, here's our general timeline. I thought we did a really great job with the imagining public safety website and having that as a landing page for people to navigate. So I think we should definitely have at least a landing point website where someone can just go on there and sort of check out where we're at in this process and also give feedback.
Thank you very much, Director Wei. Great comments. There was questions embedded. And there's a, you you did a fantastic job of of jumping ahead. The next question was about how how you would like to help inform a a plan or any essentials for public engagement. So I'll bring, you'll have a chance to say more on that if you have more, but I appreciate you shifting us into that focus area. And as far as the 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 hiring of firms, I'll I'll give a chance to either President Warner or the Chair of the Committee, Director Baumann, just a second. I simply want to recognize that as we go through this process, much like in the past process and as was exemplified in the reimagining safety, public safety conversations, we will be leveraging not only the search firm, but we will be leveraging TRIMET staff in helping us with the public engagement process, with the communications process. So there will be opportunities to integrate the efforts of the search firm with the resources from staff that they can provide to this process. So we'll be working in close collaboration with the Human Resources Department, with communications and public outreach to leverage all of the the relationships and the 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 resources they already have. Because this will be a big haul. And in as far as the the selection of the search firm process, I wanted to just leave it open. I don't know if the either President Warner or Director Baumann have any comments around that. And I'm going to just peek real quick if there's hands raised. I see Director Simmons has her hand raised. Is that is that relevant for now? I see Director Baumann has her hand raised.
Yeah, it's relevant for now, but actually Lori or Bruce could actually speak to this. But since you called my name, Kathy and others, one of the things that was looked at in in sending out the proposal to different search firms was their background in not only being diversely owned or women owned or what their history was with identifying women and people of color as candidates in in the past. And I can assure you that that they were very well represented in terms of those kinds of characteristics. That was something that we looked at very closely. So it remains to be seen how many of those firms actually respond to our informal request for information. But it was a key criteria that that Lori and I and Ozzy and Bruce looked at in terms of forwarding our our request for a proposal to firms. I'll also add, yeah, thank you, Linda. Kathy, you you made the very important point that there might be kind of additional tasks that we could parcel out. And we've we've specifically mentioned when we solicited proposals that there might be opportunities for hiring, in addition to the search firm, hiring a consultant on specifically on diversity issues. And so that's that is definitely a possibility and we're going to, in other words, if the search firm could use support or could fill in some some capabilities with a consultant, we certainly will consider that. I also want to let everyone know that we're on a pretty fast track. We just posted on Monday, our request for proposals from search firms and the deadline for responding to that request is tomorrow. So we identified several firms that we sent the request to, but it also is public. And so anybody out there who has a search firm who wants to get involved, we we are open to to proposals from anyone. But we are, we are asking for a quite detailed proposal to address diversity and inclusion and experience, experience with transit, other types of experience. So that's all very important and an ability to to conduct really international search. So we've we've set the bar pretty high for what we're looking for in a search firm. And I I hope that its expectations will be met. But we, tomorrow is the deadline for responses.
So Bruce, the only thing I would add is just that you're going to have an opportunity to look at the firms that have responded and and provide input. But I think there may very well be an opportunity to to piggyback and utilize some other firms in this effort because it's a, it's going to be a wide search and and it's, we want to make sure that we, again, we have a diverse pool of candidates that are qualified and meet what we think we need as a general manager. So next week, we'll have a good discussion on that as we get into the discussion of potentially hiring a a search firm based on what we hear back here. So more to come.
Thank you. Thank you, President Warner. So now I'm going to keep us moving in the in the final set of questions and I'm going to combine them. We've already started kind of addressing it. And it's, the question is, as we look at public engagement campaign, are there any essentials that you would like to see to help inform a plan? We're already talking about what we want to see in the public engagement process. So I'm going to just layer in the final question. What role would you do you plan on playing? And just to change it up, I'm going to go first this time. I think that, you know, serving on the committee is an honor and it's going to have me in it's serving in a lot of the public engagement. So for me, I'm really looking for a a multicultural, multilingual approach that allows folks from that have different methods of communication to be able to incorporate their voice. So that's what I'm looking for in the public engagement campaign. And as far as the the role I plan on playing, I I plan on being, participating in public engagement sessions in public forums and I I offered myself to to meet with coalitions and groups that are interested in being a part of this process. So that's something that will be happening throughout the entire process. And with that, I'll keep it open and I'm just going to see, we've been doing the hand raising thing. So if anyone would like to have some thoughts about is essential and what role they'd like to play, please. And I'm looking for, it's, okay, I don't see any hands raised. So I'm going to go with odds and evens. District, District One.
Well, that was quick.
All right.
Should have gone backwards. I really like somebody facilitating meeting and looking at who's raising their hands. So thanks for doing this, Ozzy. So so first off, you know, I I spent a lot of time out talking with folks during the last GM recruitment. And so I expect to be And so I expect to be out there helping out, and it's going to be different as a result of COVID and what we're doing. But I fully expect and want to be engaged in the duties of going out and hearing and talking to the interest groups, elected officials, or whatever. So I'm ready and willing, and I hope that the rest of the Board will want to do some of this too, because I think it's very valuable for all of us to hear. So I'm there. I will do whatever we need to do to make it happen. And hopefully, the search firm and the rest of the Board can give me some idea how we can share the load, because we don't want everybody going to one person or two people going to all these meetings. Can I answer your question?
Thank you. Yes, Director Simmons?
I agree with you, Ozzy, and with Bruce. I mean, I'm willing to do whatever is needed as representatives to be participating within the various community activities. And so I'll just wait to see how that unfolds and let whomever is organizing that to point me to wherever they need me.
Thank you very much. Director Edwards?
Thank you. I think I echo the same thing that has already been said by previous directors, that, you know, at the end of this process, we want to make sure that no one has a legitimate complaint about not being involved in this process or not having an opportunity to be involved in this process. And so that the community is satisfied with how we went about doing this. And I think all of us have agreed that, you know, this is what our task is, and this is what our responsibilities are, and that's what we do.
Thank you very much. Director Wei?
Okay, got this down, figured it out this time. Yes, also just echoing what everyone said in terms of, you know, I think my involvement. I am committed to reaching out to stakeholders and community groups and elected officials in my region, as well as work collaboratively. You know, I think that's a key word that we're going to have to keep using in this process, since there are, I want to say seven, but six of us right now who are discharged with this work for the entire region. So I think, you know, commitment to just working collaboratively, regionally. I also just want to name that, you know, while this is a huge part of our responsibility as a Board, there is also regular business that is still taking place in our agency, and that is still ongoing, and it does not stop. So I actually would be really interested in seeing at the next board meeting just, again, more plans around the interim GM conversation. You know, I think Doug always provides his GM reports, which are always very in-depth and always really well put together. So I would like to just continue seeing that work unfolding. I am, again, continue to be worried about COVID. And, you know, I think with the vaccination rollout and just how that's really getting implemented here in our region and how our frontline workers in particular are going to, you know, hopefully benefit from getting a vaccine, because it's important, right? We have bus drivers and cleaning staff who interact with the public ongoing, and they are our essential workforce. And I'm also just concerned, or I just want to raise that, I think anytime that there is significant leadership, you know, transition, that employee morale, right, can also be impacted or affected, for whatever reason. Because it's important to just have the best people out there in whatever roles or service that they do in our agency, to be in our agency and continue to see them thrive and grow in various roles. So I also just want to bring that, the employee morale piece, I think, right now is really important, in addition to our financial outlook that has already been shared. And then addressing some of the changes that are happening at the federal level, particularly around transportation, because it's a new chapter in our American history, starting officially today. And there's a lot of changes that are taking place federally, and that is going to, I think, impact just, you know, again, how we look, how we look at transportation and funding, and funding here in Oregon. So those are just all the pieces that I want to name in addition to, of course, also being involved in the GM search process.
Thank you very much, Director Wei. And now I'll go to, we don't have someone, again, from District 6. They, we should be having that voice shortly. District 4, Director Baumann.
You know, I want to pick up on something Kathy just said, a very important point that we've talked about outreach to the public. But, you know, we're also going to be doing outreach within TriMet to TriMet employees as we conduct this search. So that's really important. We need their perspective. They need to be part of this process as well. And I'll also say that all the outreach that we're discussing is all going to take place, I want to be clear, it's all going to take place in a panel setting or a town hall setting. It's going to be done in public. It's true, we're going to call on Board members as much as possible, but it's not going to be one-on-one, you know. There's going to be a public record of all outreach that we do. So please be assured, this isn't going to be kind of back-room conversations. It's all going to be accessible to the public. And so, yeah, thank you to everybody for your input. It's been very helpful.
Thank you very much. So with that, that does conclude our questions. I'm District 2. I'll answer something with this, oh.
Keith has his hand up.
Director Edwards?
I want to go back just a moment. Something that just popped into my head, and I guess my question, are we going to wait any of the criteria for vetting the general manager?
Oh, boy. A great question. It has not been fully answered by either the committee. There is no formal selection process that, we have not written interview questions. We have not sort of established that, frankly. You know, yeah, it's premature, other than individual perspectives as far as what we're going to do about that. We clearly have a lot of items to balance. And from my experience, having some level of protocol, some ability to have a waiting system that we are on board with allows us to ensure that we're navigating this difficult decision with the right balance. So, you know, I don't know if the official answer, I certainly hope so, is my personal answer. But we have not fully discussed that.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to put it out there, because we hadn't discussed it, and for folks to think about.
Certainly.
That's a good answer, Director Gonzalez. We were not there yet, Keith.
Yeah. Ozzy?
Yes, Director Simmons?
You know, it's a really good point, Keith. What I can tell you from searches not with TriMet and where I was a candidate for a college presidency, what search firms typically tell candidates, and it'll be interesting to see if the search firm here tells us that. The first, the order of the key knowledge, skills, and abilities should be in priority order. Because candidates are told that the highest priority of the agency is always in the first three to five. And so, you know, that's something, it'll be interesting to see what this search firm says. But, you know, when you're a candidate for a position like this, and you see all of this criteria, you know, you need to know what, because not everybody's going to have everything. So what are the key components that are absolutely essential in the search that they can speak to their qualifications of?
Fantastic. So thank you very much. This is great discussion. And the only thing I can add to, as far as the transparency and the process that we have before us is that it seems clear across the Board that there needs to be a mechanism for not only transparency but for input from a lot of constituents across the agency. I'm hearing across the Board that we can tap the resources of the Board to participate in the process. I want to recognize for staff that this is clearly one of the most important things that we can do. We will be very sensitive to the transition process and that the discussion about the interim process and how we navigate that transition is something that we, the Board, have already expressed an interest in. It's not necessarily the focus of today's discussion, but it is certainly on our radar. What we will be doing in regards to the interim process, we will discuss at a separate meeting. But in as far as interaction between the staff resources, the search firm resources, and the Board, it's important to recognize how much the Board is not only interested but expressing their availability to be a part of this. So with that, the other element of transparency that I recognize is, you know, in executive search process, there's going to be a lot of need for having eyes and ears on the candidacy, on the candidates that we're considering. On the flip side, there's also going to be a certain expectation for confidentiality early in the process for these types of positions. So one of the things that we're going to be navigating as we move forward will be how to ensure that we have the right level of eyes and ears, the right amount of voices, giving us the critical information, and that we have a way to honor that transition between when a candidate is at risk, if they're exposed, and when a candidate is at that place where the public can get to know them. So we, and we have a full commitment of the Board to be available throughout this process. You have heard, the public and the staff has heard what is important to the Board already, and we encourage the input. We look forward to this process, and we hope to have a transparent, thoughtful process. And today's just the beginning. So thank you to the Board for an honest dialogue, for your time in this important work upfront. I want to thank the staff and their support for preparing us for this meeting today, and to the Search Committee for doing some of the early legwork in getting us to the point where we can begin seeing a clear framework on how we're going to work moving forward. So with that, I'd like to pass it back over to President Warner. Thanks a lot for all the comments, and I hope you all have a great rest of your day.
Great. Thank you so much, Director Gonzalez. And thank you to all the Board members for your time this morning and an opportunity to really talk about, again, the Board's most important responsibility here. So this was a good discussion. It was productive, and I look forward to the next steps. And this is going to include, as you mentioned, Director Gonzalez, the staff working to incorporate what we all said and heard today into an updated, what I would call interim general manager position description that can then, with action by us next week, can formally kick off the recruitment process. I'm hoping that next week, that also, we can, again, also post the roles and responsibilities to our website. I don't think we need to adopt this document, because it's going to be a living document. It changes over time. Hopefully, we'll also have an opportunity to talk about the search firm recruitment and if there's any decisions that need to be made on the 27th there. And then I am, as you pointed out, there's going to be lots of discussion about an interim general manager. I'm just starting to have those dialogues with the current general manager, and I will have many discussions with you, probably individually, over the next couple of weeks as we move forward on that. But another important piece of information that needs to be done concurrently with all the other stuff that we're talking about here today. So I'm really happy with what everybody did and what we learned today. I guess I'd like to turn to our Search Committee Chair and make sure. Lori, did you have any other comments or questions for us before we sign off today?
No, I want to say thank you to Ozzy. Great job facilitating. And thank you for everybody's thoughtful comments. And I agree that I think we've got a good foundation from which to launch the search.
All right. Well, thank you again all. So if there's nothing else that we want to talk about this morning, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and see you next Wednesday. Last time, anything else? All right. Thank you all. Have a great rest of your week. And I think I'll go back and review and re-listen to some of the speeches I heard earlier this morning. Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.